Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the City Council Regular Meeting of September 17th, 2019. And as soon as we can get everybody online here.
Mayor Kristi Malchoe.
Yep, I'm present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez Valderrama.
We have a quorum? Perfect. All right, so can Councilmember Valderrama, would you lead us on the pledge?
Please rise and join me in saying our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the approval of the agenda. We've got a couple of changes to the agenda.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Council. In talking with our attorney, I'd like to move item 15, which is unfinished business, a report investigation of potential legal dumping, to make that item 12. So I want to put it between the proclamation and the presentation. They are on their way right now from Seattle, but I'd like to get them in and out as soon as possible. So I think that would be a better spot. And let me see, I think that was it.
Under new business, I had...
Oh, and under new business, I'd like to discuss moving the council meeting that's scheduled for November 5th, election night, to November 4th, so we can leave election night open. So I'd like to bring that up under new business. That's all.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor.
So now I have approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
As amended.
As amended, so moved?
As amended.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. First thing on the agenda is executive session. And this is regarding land acquisition pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1B.
Dispend.
And how long do we anticipate?
Fifteen?
Okay.
Yeah, fifteen.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Next on our list, I guess, public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit for person or five-minute limit for representing official position of a recognized community organization. If you'd like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM of the end of the business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at Anderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Do we have anybody signed up? And please be aware that I'm terrible with names. Okay, first on our list is Nancy Anderson.
Is this on? Yes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Nancy Anderson. My address is 26657 Southeast 31st Street. We've lived in Smamish since its incorporation and beyond, a total of 23 years. My husband and I raised our family here, and together through the years, we've followed city council meetings and planning commission meetings. A few years ago, I completed a term, my term as Planning Commissioner. I was honored to have served. So I'm taking a moment to lighten up the room. You see, I love award shows, and on September 22nd, the Primetime Emmy Awards Ceremony will be aired on Q13. So allow me to channel the award show by thanking people. Now, I have a speech somewhere here. Here it is. Okay. Okay, just one moment. Oh, in my glasses. Okay, here's my... Thank you. Sorry. First, I want to thank the public. Paul, Mary, Karen, Sharon, Jan, many other people who I've enjoyed listening to and getting to know through the years. We may not always agree with one another, but it's been always a joy chatting behind the cameras, right below the banner, so you don't know how many people are back there, and through social media, email over coffee, and at events. City Manager, you had to get your sea legs pretty quickly. And so I want to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff, past and present. People like, and I know I'll forget somebody here, so sorry, Kathy Curry, Tony Donzel, David Goodman, Andrew Zager, LB Jones, Jim Gruber, Kelly Hildy, Mike Sugg, Sam Park, Stephen Chen, Tracy Tree, David Pyle, Cheryl Paxton, Melanie Anderson, Lita Hatchey, and you know, the list goes on. So understandably, there's been turnover, and that is a concern. But in my former career as a human resource professional, I know that sometimes having someone leave isn't such a bad idea. Of course, the labor market is tight right now, so even more kudos to staff who have to pull double duty while the hiring process continues. City Attorney Michael Kenyon, I want to thank you for, when I was on Planning Commission, talking to me about public records, you know, and making sure I'm not mixing my personal email, and got set up with the city email, and I had a much better understanding through your patience, very basic questions, but you got me up to speed quickly, so I thank you for that. Now I'm going to go down. Jason Ritchie, thank you. Hello, I didn't say hello to you this evening. Thank you for accepting my membership into the Save Clohanni Park Facebook group. I think it's a fantastic thing. And just to let you know, I manage the Facebook group for the church I belong to, Shepherd of the Hills in Clohanni. And so we've liked the Clohanni Association page, we've liked the policing group that you're in, and I'm hoping with me, with our pastor, with other members, perhaps we can do a better job... Sorry, I'll be quick. I know, my time's running out. Ah! So I can't even go down the aisle then. It's Chris Ross. Thank you, thank you, Karen.
Okay, well, the music is new to me, so there you go. And fa...
I like it.
And thank you. Okay, next on our list is Stephanie Redette Stevens, and her adorable son.
What is your name?
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn. This is Brooklyn Stevens. How old are you, Brooklyn?
Three.
Three. Hi, we're Stephanie and Brooklyn Stevens, and we live at...
Yeah.
At 2120, Sohali Drive East.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, why are you here, Brooklyn?
We need to keep some deer safe on the road for cars almost drive over deer on the road.
Right, so he, Brooklyn is very concerned because he, today was his sixth day of preschool. And every single day...
Yeah.
And how many deer have we seen? How many deer have we seen on the road, Brooklyn?
One.
One this morning, and how many others?
A lot.
A lot. And we...
Yeah, a lot.
And he explained to me today that he's very worried, and he wants to make signs...
Yeah, because.
Okay, yeah, it's very good. He's very, very concerned, and he wants to make signs so that people are more cautious driving on the road, which supported, I did a PRR.
Yeah, but the truth.
It is the truth. And on September 3rd, I got results back from a PRR.
Because it is.
Yes, because it is. That so far, just using the Sea Click Fix app, this year, there are 23...
Because I think it is.
Yes, there are 23 dead deer, just using the Sea Click Fix app.
Yeah, from the forest.
Yes, from the forest. And 48 last year. That's just on the app, and that does not include when our road maintenance workers, according to Dan...
Yeah, but because.
Find them on the side of the road. There isn't like a formal logging system, so we wanted to make a suggestion that maybe based on where these reports are coming in from, that the city look at putting up deer crossing or wildlife crossing signs where they're commonly found dead, so that we can or create an awareness campaign with our communications manager, so that we can have a more informed...
Yeah.
And considerate constituency.
Yeah, but because.
Yes. Very good, Brooklyn.
It is.
Can you say thank you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I don't think he's going to be a shy one.
Okay, and then, yeah. Okay, then last on my list is Mary Victor. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, please line up behind Mary on the wall, on the wall, or behind her, by the wall.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish, and I should have a short PowerPoint here. I did do just a paper write-up because the stormwater code you're looking at started in 2014 with problems before I started speaking, and I just wanted to show you some of the concerns I have, particularly because I think it's getting a little bit looser with regard to replaced impervious surface for Inglewood and Tamrac. So Tamrac is shown here in the blue. You can see it kind of looks like an Indian arrowhead there. And just above it, to the north, is Inglewood, so they're actually adjacent to each other, and Inglewood goes all the way to the shoreline. And if we zoom in on Tamrac, you'll see there's over 200 lots. And if you see the line, which is down the left side of the screen, you'll see, if I click back and forth between them, you'll see that there's a portion of Tamrac on the west side that's not covered. But everywhere that's in the yellow does have to have a drainage review right now. It doesn't check square footage at all. It just says, hey, if you're in this yellow area, you need to have a drainage review. And you guys had fixed that map in 2017 as well. And then for Inglewood, you can see it's a lot of lots, it's 640 lots total, according to King County Parcel Viewer, and it goes all the way to the lake. But there's a map that doesn't use the shoreline, which is fine, because shoreline gets its own regulations. But here's the rest of Inglewood. It's pretty complex. The yellow is the landslide hazard drainage area, the orange on top of that is landslide hazard area, the pink over on the left is the no disturbance area, and then the purple hash that goes sideways, that's the erosion hazard and air-sensitive water bodies overlay, which covers most, but not the whole thing. And then if we go to the next thing, the thing that sticks out to the right side that's brown, it looks like a dolphin's nose, that's the erosion hazard area, and that goes all the way in pieces to the shoreline. And then the white area is the critical aquifer recharge area, which isn't being dealt with at this time. So you can see most of Inglewood is covered by those, but there are portions that aren't. So this is the Inglewood map again, with all those brown lines are the very close-together elevation lines showing you how steep it is. And you'll notice up in the northeast corner, there are houses built there already. So I did that today, and I didn't put a slide for that, but I looked at the corner. And if you look just in the corner here, there are actually 18 houses that are built in three and a half acres, which is about an R5 development instead of an R4 development. So we already have too many houses in Inglewood. We don't have all the utilities that are needed. And this map is also in the Smamish Municipal Code. It's from the 2014 ordinances. There were two, then they were repeated again in 2015. The second ordinance was codified, and then in 2016, Tamrac got the same ordinance, and then we codified it. And we're looking at going kind of a little bit eased up on some of the areas in Inglewood and Tamrac in the code. So I was going to ask that if you could pull it from the consent agenda, if you're interested in speaking to any of this and have staff relook at it. I did submit changes, which are not dissimilar from what they have, but after I wrote them, I realized I even had a couple little gaps or something I was worried about. So that's my public feedback for today on stormwater code. Thanks for listening.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? All right, okay, moving past that, we are on to consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I have a first, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have got presentations and proclamations. First, we've got, and do we have our person here for our first proclamation? So our first proclamation tonight is National Recovery Month. And do you have a copy of this to read this?
I do not, but if you would like to read it, I'd be great. Sounds good.
We have a copy for you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, Brad Feingood from Seattle King County Public Health. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders work, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorder is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize signs of a problem, and guide those in need of help to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas we recognize four dimensions of recovery for mental health and substance use disorders: health, home, purpose, and community. And last but not least, whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse Mental Health and Service Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, King County, the state of Washington invite all residents of the city of Smamish to participate in National Recovery Month. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for this. Thank you so much.
We have another proclamation this evening, and I'm going to have Councilmember Stewart read it. And it is for our diaper awareness month.
All right. Excellent. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experiencing diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply, and whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over three years, and whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs, and whereas the people of Smamish recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities, and whereas Smamish is proud to be, to support community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. Now, and therefore, on behalf of the city council, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through September 29th as Diaper Need Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to make note, Baby Corner is a huge, huge help for so many moms, and I know they've been around for a very long time. I know my kids went to help me work at Baby Corner when they were very young, so I'm Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is, yes, moving, and it is item 15, which was moved up to item 12. And we have, I guess, two attorneys that are with us this evening. And from Stokes and Lawrence, is that correct? Are they both here? Okay. So we have Attorney Elizabeth Finley and Attorney Aviva Cam.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, and City Attorney. I'm Aviva Cam from the firm of Stokes Lawrence. Thank you also for moving us up in the, in the agenda. I'm greatly appreciative of the earlier timeline. And thank you for putting your trust in us and in my firm for this investigation. We are here to report on an investigation which we conducted. Sorry, I'm going to see if I can... Can you still hear me if I move this down? Okay. We were asked to conduct an investigation following the receipt by the city of a video which showed a VACT or truck discharging water on city property, a property that is commonly referred to as the Sween Lot or as the Pipe Yard. And we were asked to look into the circumstances under which this video was taken, what this video might show, and what, if anything, city employees knew about, what had, what was showing in the video, and what had been done about it. In conducting this investigation, we interviewed 10 individuals, including the former city manager, Larry Patterson, as well as a gentleman named Nathan Goodman, who's a NEPA, an environmental compliance specialist at Hamer Environmental. And I thank the city for contracting with Hamer Environmental to make him available to us as a resource. Some of the interviews were conducted by myself, and the majority of the interviews were conducted by my colleague, Elizabeth Finley. So Liz is here as well, if follow-up questions are needed with specific issues which she Our findings are that the, what was shown in the video, the video was taken in April of 2017. What was shown, it was clean steam bed debris and water overflow, which was overflowing from the George Davis Creek during a period of heavy rainfall. The city had contracted with a company called Provac, which has VACT or trucks, they're water vacuum trucks, to vector the water overflow during incidents of overflow from that creek. Provac used the Pipe Yard site to dump the water and debris, and when I say debris, it was, you know, pebbles, leaves, sticks, that sort of thing, that was in, in the water. And the reason they raised it was that returning to Provac's facility, which is in Renton, would have been time-consuming time on the road. Since they were contracted for a specific period of time, they would have, had they gone all the way back to their facility to empty the truck and then returned, then the city of Smamish would have gotten a lot less bang for their buck, essentially. There would have been a lot less water vectored, because the time would have been lost to their travel. So they wouldn't, and it would have delayed the remediation of an active flood remediation situation. The Provac was authorized and instructed to use the site in which they were, they were putting that water, so it wasn't the case that they found it and did it without permission. City personnel instructed them that they could empty their trucks in the place where they were doing so. So it was done entirely with the city's knowledge and with their permission, and in fact, at the city's direction. With the exception of one person, who was the person who took the video, John Kraus, all individuals who we interviewed who had knowledge about it differentiated between sediment from a clean stream bed, as was the case here, and vectoring something like a catch basin, which might have had oil in it, or brake dust, or some other kind of contaminant. Multiple individuals who, through their work positions, had reason to have knowledge about this circumstance indicated that the site, so some of them referred to it as a hold-and-hall site, was considered acceptable for the purpose described, that the material emptied there was, I said, was clean dirt, meaning it was clean sediment and water, nothing containing contaminants. And so one of the questions which was put to our firm was whether remediation was done at the site. The answer is that remediation was not done, but the reason is because remediation wasn't necessary since it was clean sediment that was being put in that place. At present, the area is being used for dumping dirt from city projects. It is not being used for dumping water or sediment from vectoring. The changed use has been in place from right around the time when this video was taken. The first time that this video was seen at the city, when it was made known to city officials, the maintenance department instructed Provac to stop using the site, not because they felt that they, that it was incorrect to be using it, but because it was evident that the appearance seemed to be upsetting to some individuals, and so they decided that it didn't need to be used in that, in that, for that purpose anymore, and Provac complied immediately with that instruction. It also, we were also asked whether this incident or Provac's conduct in relation to this incident had to do with any decisions about Provac being contracted with the city to do similar work at other times. And it appears that Provac was not selected during the next bid cycle to do stormwater overflow work, but we interviewed an individual with knowledge on the question who indicated that the selection was made for financial reasons and not because of any issue or any impropriety that Provac conducted. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions that members of the council have, but if there are no follow-up questions, I can end my presentation.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
I've got a question.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Hornish.
Can you give us a little more detail of Mr. Kraus's view of the water and what knowledge he had versus what everybody else was saying as to it being clean? You said his was an exception, and it was contrary to everybody else. And I just want to, and can you also clarify that at the time you interviewed him, he was no longer employed as a staff member, but everybody else that you interviewed was a staff member?
That is, that is correct. John Kraus is a, was employed at the time that he took this video and remained employed for 20 months after that. He resigned his employment in December of last year, effective early in January of this year, and he was interviewed recently, so he was not a current employee at the time that he was interviewed. John Kraus appeared to us to be very sincere, and I want to be clear, I do not think that Ms. Finley interviewed him, she does not think that he was intentionally exaggerating or mischaracterizing what he observed. or mischaracterizing what he observed. That said, it appears that he did not have a factual basis to support his suspicion or his hypothesis that the water may have been contaminated. And information from witnesses with greater knowledge about the circumstances of the water vectoring and the dumping in the Sweene Pipe Yard, we think was persuasive to reach the findings, which I described to you. What he described seeing was that, he, he said that the water looked to be dark to him, and that from where he was standing, that some of the water at least came in contact with his shoes, or, you know, kind of seeped up under his shoes or over the toes of his shoes, and that it appeared to him to be dark. He used the word sludge to describe it, but if one views the video, the, the water, it looks like a liquid, whereas the word sludge connotes something more viscous or thick, and that is not supported by what is contained in the video. Also, the video is taken from a vantage point, which suggests that he was standing quite far away, at least when that video was taken. But he also described to us other individuals from the city who worked within the stormwater department, who were watching as this, as the water was being emptied from the truck. And so, you know, we concluded this was all the same event that, that Mr. Kraus observed was the same event as the vectoring dumping, which was described to us by city employees.
Okay, so a little bit of a follow-up. I understood the sequence of the interviews was Mr. Kraus was the last person that you interviewed, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it was sometime after you interviewed everybody else, is that correct?
It is.
I know this, and I just want to state this and correct me if I'm wrong, or Mike as well, this was not considered to be a whistleblower act, and there was no whistleblower protection or anything that Mr. Kraus was looking for at the time he brought the video to light. Is that, is that all, is that a correct statement?
I would defer that answer to the city attorney. I'm asked to make factual findings, so I'm gonna let the city attorney speak to that.
Yeah, that's correct, Tom. There's no record and personnel or otherwise that, that Mr. Kraus sought whistleblower protection, or that he made any post-termination, post-separation from employment since he resigned claims.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just a little bit fuzzy as to, and I'll agree that it wasn't a whistleblower act, so to speak, but I'm a little fuzzy, if somebody has this information, why they would be the last person to be interviewed? Can you explain that rationale and thought process, that until, I think we kind of requested or almost demanded that you interview him, you had not interviewed him, and I'm trying to understand why?
Sure. I, I will, I guess there are two answers. One is, and the primary one is that I conduct workplace investigations as a large part of my practice, and I have found that witnesses who are no longer employed are usually not my best, fastest, most efficient source of information. And particularly here, I had a, a very effective proxy, which was a video taken by Mr. Kraus on that day, showing me largely what he saw. And so I felt like I had sufficient factual information to begin with to, to find out what I could about the circumstances of the vectoring. This was, you know, the information in, and the answers to this investigation are largely factual ones, which were, you know, based on objectively verifiable information that we could gain as we did from talking with others, from reviewing records, from looking at the Vactor contract. And so I, I felt that I was able to make significant progress in that manner. There were also considerations of the fact that it was, information was shared with me, and it was entirely corroborated when we did interview Mr. Kraus, that he, that when he resigned his employment, he did not feel that he was on entirely good terms with the city. And because of that, I felt that whatever I heard from him, I would have to essentially take the information that he shared with me with a certain grain of salt, given that, given the animosity or hostility or disappointment with which he looked on his time with the city. Additionally, our, after we wanted to reach, to, to speak with Mr. Kraus, he proved to be quite difficult to track down. He, so it took us weeks of effort to actually be able to get on the phone with him, to schedule a time to meet with him, and then to actually have, have that meeting conducted. So a portion of the time that elapsed had to do with my decision and my discretion and how I conducted the investigation, and an additional portion of that time had to do with just the logistics of finding him and getting in touch with him and making arrangements to meet with him.
A few follow-ups, and I'm trying to figure out, had it been a whistleblower claim, would that have changed your view on that?
I, had this been a, had I been asked to investigate whether any aspect of Mr. Kraus's experience as an employee, I imagine that it would have been a very different investigation in more than one respect. So that might have been one manner that it would be different. I would have likely wanted to speak with him sooner, but it would have differed in many other respects as well. And I, in discussions with the city attorney, it was confirmed that the, that my charge and the scope of this investigation was to look into the facts and circumstances surrounding the Vactor truck dumping at that location, and not to look into facts and circumstances related to Mr. Kraus's employment or his resignation from employment.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Then, last question I think I have then, you brought in an environmental expert. How was, was, I think it was a gentleman, right? How was he able to determine from the video that it truly had no sediment or anything in it? Was there any, I guess there was no way to do a testing, right? He just, he could tell that from the video?
No, and in fact, he was not, we, we spoke with him as to whether he could contribute something additional to this investigation. It was ultimately determined that it, that for our purposes at least, that, that we did not feel it was necessary. And so he did not render an opinion as to what was contained in the water, or indeed into what the, the current state of the site. What he, the information that he provided to us was that, was essentially that he discussed what options there would be for him to, to take a look at, and what he said is, given the amount of time that had elapsed between 27, April 2017 and the present, that any site visit or examination he might do would really have the purpose of telling you on a forward-going basis if the city wanted to make a certain use of that area, whether it would be appropriate, but that there, there isn't any type of analysis that he could do where he would be able to render an opinion as to what happened in April 2017. What he, he confirmed with us that what we shared with him is what we believed to be the case was in, you know, he felt, sounded normal and consistent with practices that he was familiar with. You know, he, he didn't, he, he said, but he said there's very little that he could do to add to or elucidate further.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Councilmember Hornish asked most of my questions. I guess I can only comment what's on my mind. I find it very sad that we prejudge the credibility of the chief witness. It certainly doesn't create a culture to report environmental intrusions or bad acts. I feel too much like we hired a defense attorney versus an investigator. Let's just learn from this and not do, be very clear what the scope of the work is. It's an investigation. It's not to defend what happened, it's to find out the truth.
Okay, well, I've got a bunch of questions.
Please, sir, you can ask it.
Well, nobody's lights are on, so. Okay. Well, then I, I was the one who had the recording turned in too, so I've got a bunch of questions for you. I had a young man come to me who explained that, and frankly, this should have been turned in as a whistleblower, so I'm disappointed that it wasn't handled as such. So I looked at the video, I looked at the video again today, that water was black as, as could be. So it's, so when you say it's a clean dumping, how do we know it was a clean dumping? Was there any testing done?
There was no testing done at the time, and what the environmental service told us is that with the time having passed...
There's no way to know if it was a clean dumping or not. Okay. So, and in the contract, it says that there's to be no dumping, that's to go to Renton.
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, I'm gonna reach down to grab my water, I'm listening to...
Yeah. So in the contract we have, it says that there's to be no dumping, all the dumping that they do is supposed to go to Renton. So who told, who told them that it was okay to do the dumping?
I'm, I'm looking at my colleague because I believe she conducted those interviews, so I'm gonna let her answer those questions, Ms. Finley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe that the, there were city stormwater employees who directed the Provac employees to, to offload the sediment and water in that location, and there were two maintenance employees there, Wayland Duggins and Jeff Dickinson, and it was done with the approval of Dan Johnson.
Now, I also know that I turned over, it was either four or five names, that were validating Mr. Kraus's story of what that water looked like and what it looked like when it was going over his shoes, because they were walking in the same stuff. So were those people also interviewed?
I'd be glad to tell you the individuals who I interviewed, that was, it was Larry Patterson, Steve Lenachewski, Lyman Howard, Glenn Akramoff, Danica Globakar, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name.
That's okay, I do the same thing.
Tony Dalziel, Dan Johnson, Jay Kraus, who is John Kraus's father, John Kraus, and Mr. Goodman from Hamer Environmental.
Okay, so none of the people that he gave that would, that backed him up were interviewed?
Deputy Mayor, as we, and to be clear, I'm not, I'm not certain of which individuals specifically you're referring to now. We did, we, we reached Mr. Kraus literally last week was when we were finally able to sit down with him. And so it was, at, at that time, he shared some names with us of under, other individuals.
Well, he handed his names over to me, which were handed over to Larry Patterson in the spring, when this whole thing started. So, I mean, he did that long ago. So if you didn't get them, that's, that's, that's a whole different story. Okay, so I guess I have all sorts of concerns with this whole thing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look through this. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Stewart. Okay. Councilmember Stewart, and then Mayor Malcha.
So it sounds like Deputy Mayor may have concerns about who was interviewed, but you, you said that you interviewed Mr. Kraus's father, and he corroborated Mr. Kraus's story? Or that, that it was not sludge, it was just water that was muddy, but with dirt and sticks and, and pebbles?
Well, he wasn't able to speak to that exact question. He wasn't present. What we interviewed Jay Kraus about was that John, the son, had brought the video to Jay, his father, and it was actually Jay who first forwarded the video to someone within the city.
Got it.
Because John had been nervous to do so. So we confirmed with Jay how, how he received the video, how the video got to the city, and how his, his recollections of how his son felt and the things that his son said when he saw it.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Mayor Malcha.
Thank you. The deputy mayor made a point relative to the contract, and that it read that there was not to be any dumping, and that specifically they were to haul it to a site, I believe, down in Renton. And because of the council that authorizes the contract, wouldn't changes to the terms of the contract that would include where they dispose of the materials that they are doing vacuuming to be before council unless, if they are going to be altered?
Mayor, I believe that the question you're asking is one of, is a legal conclusion, and I, I hope I don't sound too semantic. I'm very careful in, in that I am tasked with factual findings. So as to the, the requirements of the contract, I would defer to the city attorney as to whether the contract was complied with or not.
Ask our attorney.
Counsel, I will tell you, it has been many, many months since I looked at the contract. I will assume for these purposes that it does have the provision that both the mayor and deputy mayor have mentioned, that said, no dumping in the city. So Christie's right, the council approves the contract, then the implementation administration of the contract generally falls to the city manager and his staff. Now, certainly a question exists whether the staff would be entitled to, to authorize the breach of a material term of a contract. My understanding from the investigation and the work that was done here is that both Steve and Lyman authorized it as sort of a greater good situation, that that creek was flooding and they wanted to get as much water off as they could. But that's just my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for entrusting us with this, and again, for moving it on the agenda. I very much appreciate it.
Karen, I've got some more thoughts. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
I'm still here.
I'm sorry about that. Well, I'm trying to figure out where to go from here, because I think you certainly hear that we have some reservations, and I'm not sure if we're saying it's good, it's bad, but I'm trying to figure out, and I'm just spitballing here, maybe if we could get a written report with a little more information of each of the interviews and what they said and who was actually there, and I think that's only Mr. Kraus that took the video that was actually there. And then just to confirm, and where I'm really going in my head is what Deputy Mayor just mentioned, that Mr. Kraus had some reservations about turning it over. Probably, you could think about it, if it was deemed or considered to be, or effectively to be a whistleblower, that he was concerned about what was going to happen, and the fact that he's left the city employment after that, albeit 20 months, but these things kind of happen. I'm wondering at some point, and maybe this is after the written report, we should think about going through that HR employment type of investigation to better understand, why did he really leave, and, and was it because of him bringing this to light? But I'm not sure we want to go there yet, so I'm thinking maybe just a written report would be an idea. Open it up for discussion.
Mr. Attorney, because I would happen to agree with that. Mr. Attorney, because I would happen to agree with that.
Far be it for me to cast dispersions on Councilmember Hornish, but I think he's looking at my notes. And I do, I agree, it would make sense for Ms. Cam and her colleague to put together a written report for council to look at, and then, as I've suggested in earlier emails, if, if the council then wants to retain them or others to do a personnel investigation, that's certainly a matter you can take up. But Larry did not assign a personnel investigation, and it was principally, because I spoke with him a couple of times about it, at least, principally because the people that would be the subject of the personnel investigation were no longer employees of the city. Not only Mr. Kraus, but Lyman, and Steve Lenichevsky, and some others. And so he wanted to get to the factual basis for the videotape. I think that has been done, but you certainly retain the authority and ability to look into that from a personnel standpoint. As I've also cautioned, former employees can't be compelled to participate in those types of things, but they may choose to.
Okay. Well, I would support a written report. Any other comments from council members? Seeing no lights, so let's have some input. All right.
So I have a question for the attorney. Written reports. Is there a potential, in the past, there have been times that there have been investigations, and the city had preferred that there be no written reports, or other cities as well, not to put something specific, because those can also turn into two-edged swords. If, in trying to do an investigation, or that it can be used against the city, would there be any such risk in this case?
Well, there's always risk when attorneys are involved. In this case, I'm not overly troubled by it, because, again, it is a report that will reflect factual findings. In the other types of investigations that you've referenced, they were normally done under the attorney line, and especially the attorney work product privilege, which protects those reports and the working papers, because they're done in reasonable anticipation of litigation. That's just not the case here.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we ask for a written report from the firm that did the factual investigation.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, and I have a light on, so I'm going to call on Councilmember Ritchie.
Councilmember Hornish, beat me to the punch. Thank you, Councilmember Hornish.
All right. So we have a motion on the floors. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights on. I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the vote. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 All right, sounds, any opposed? None. All right, sounds like we're going to ask for a written report.
We'll get to work.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure thing. Thank you all very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So we are moving on to Sahali Way Corridor. An oldie but a goodie.
Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor Council. I'll turn it over to staff, and they have a, basically a summary for this particular, for this particular item for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Cheryl Paston, again with Public Works. To my left is Andrew Zagers, our city engineer. So good evening, again. We just have a few slides. We're actually, the three slides will actually cover the next two agenda items, just because it's so short. So Andrew will give a brief overview and status update of the Sahali Way Improvement Project, and the work that we are doing with Partit, that council just adopted, or approved their contract a few weeks ago. And then I have one slide talking about the removal of the Sahali project from the traffic concurrency model. So we'll just go through those couple of slides, and then open it up for questions. Sorry? There you go.
Kind of ran through my slide there.
Yeah, I just went right through yours and getting to mine. Sorry.
Good evening. So as Cheryl mentioned, we just started the contract with Partit. It was approved in the last council meeting. Since then, we did have a kickoff meeting with our consultant to go over their schedule and the timelines that council expressed in the last meeting. That was held last week. Currently, this week, they are out on Sahali, collecting additional traffic counts to kind of assist in their summary and review of the data, both of past numbers, and then also going through the models requested on the scope. Their contract is approved on August 20th. The project kickoff, again, was last week. They're, again, collecting data. We are on schedule to present all the data, the recommendations, and everything we discussed on the first meeting in December, on December 3rd. And then we will, again, return in January, when we have the 3D simulation model complete, and also a final version of the report in January. When we did review the schedule with Partit in the kickoff meeting, it was very tight with the amount of work that they had to do, and it was, getting it to the December 3rd was a push, but it's something that we expressed, that was definitely something we wanted to accomplish for this council.
So I would like to jump in. The work that Partit is doing will address the questions that the council gave us, I want to say, it was in July, I believe. There are a number of questions regarding the performance of Sahali and the intersections to, out to the year 2035. So we'll be bringing those results back to you in December, and then in January as well. Then with the next agenda item, the removal of the Sahali TIP projects from the traffic model. So we, the council did give that direction to us on August 20th, so August 21st is when we made that effective. The immediate consequences are, is that the corridor, again, is in failure, is in concurrency failure. We are requiring all development applications to run the concurrency test individually and not batch them. So for a single-family resident, you'll see the costs there. Again, this takes us back a few months where, before we had, before we adopted the TIP, that we've been directed that if any particular development makes Sahali, the Sahali failure worse, we cannot issue a concurrency certificate. In regards to the effects on, from what the growth hearings board might, what their opinion might be, it is unknown. I'll look to our attorney to elaborate on that as he can. But I do want to make a note that you'll see the asterisks there. The failing concurrency intersection is in the model, though. That was a clarification that council gave us. So those are, those are the couple of slides that we have for the two agenda items.
Questions from council?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Next, we have a public hearing. And next, we have a public hearing on declaring public use and necessity for land and property to be condemned as required for the Issaquapine Lake Road, Kohani Boulevard to Southeast 44th Street. Phase one, authorizing payment thereof of the city's transportation capital improvement program, funded otherwise for the general funds for the city, providing for severity and the establishment of effective date. I'd rather do the presentation first. Okay, I'm going to ask for staff presentation first, I think. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
There's no presentation?
Yeah, but I'm going to, the presentation first. Okay, I'm going to ask the staff for a presentation first.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, Mayor, we do not have a visual presentation, so we're here to, just to summarize what the agenda bill item is, and why we are here for the public hearing. This is in conjunction of our Issaquapine Lake design project. As standard procedure, we are in the process of starting to acquire right away for the project. This one lot in particular, we wanted to address a little sooner than later. It is required for our project, as we extended the limits down to the intersection of Southeast 44th, but it also works in conjunction with the school districts, elementary school development, and providing access onto Issaquapine Lake. So we're pushing this one a little quicker than all the rest of the properties. This is a formality to go through the condemnation request, as we did, similar to the Southeast 4th and Issaquapine Falls City Project. It's not something that we're going to pursue right away. We are still going to pursue all avenues of negotiations with the property owner, and it is only in the event that everything fails that we actually pursue the condemnation proceedings. But as a requirement, we are here for council to have a public hearing, open up for today, and then continue to the next meeting in October, where we will close the hearing, and then request council make a deliberation on the ordinance.
I will open it up for public comment. Thank you. Public comment, to address the council on this, it will be three minutes, three minute limit per person, or five minutes, if representing an official position of a recognized community organization. Please, when you get to the microphone, state your name and your address. I've only got one person signed up this evening, and please forgive me as I do this to your name. Jay Colbence? Is there a Jay here?
Yeah, Jay? Jay, is Jay outside? Jay, can you check real quick? He was here, right? Yeah.
I believe, if he's not here, he was here earlier, and we had a side conversation. He was regarding a different property on the project.
Okay.
So I don't believe he's here anymore for public comment.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this? Going once, going twice. Seeing and hearing none.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes?
So the way that we've advertised it, it does need to stay open until your next meeting, sir.
All righty.
Thank you.
All right, we will, we will continue this until our following, till October 2nd?
First.
October 1st. All right. Then we, hopefully, we won't have a crowd at that one. All right. Okay, so unfinished business. Nope, we moved that. Okay, new business. City manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, council, and mayor. So elections are coming for this year, and they are on November 5th. So I've been talking to a few people on how the council has done meetings in the past, shorter meeting, maybe looking at postponing a meeting or changing a meeting. But we do have a number of things on for the rest of the year that are important, so we don't really want to shorten anything. We really can't. So the idea came up, right now, we don't have anything on the November 4th study session. So we would like, what we would like to do is change the November 5th council meeting to November 4th council meeting, and keep the 5th open, election night, so that we're not here, we're not rushed. People can do what they need to do on election day and evening. We think that would be the best scenario at this point, and so we would like to make the recommendation that we go ahead and move the meeting to the 4th to keep November 5th open. So moved.
We have a first, we have a question?
If we do that, does that meeting on the 4th have to be a special meeting, then, that has a set agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, on special meetings, it has a set agenda in the sense that you can only take final action on matters that are addressed on the agenda. If something else comes up that you want to discuss or kick around, that's certainly appropriate, but only final action in a special meeting if it's listed on the agenda.
We do have a pretty full agenda, so we just want to, you know, continue with it, but on the day before.
Okay. Any other comment? We have a motion, we have a second, and no comment. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Looks like we're going to have an open election. That's excellent.
Thank you, everybody. It's a good thing. Yes, thank you.
Okay, next, we have got council reports, and I'm going to, we're going to start, we'll start at the dais, and then Christie will take you guys after we've completed the dais. Does that work, or do you want to go first?
No, whatever's fine.
Okay.
So I just want to give a quick update. Went to a really great pre-PIC meeting on encouraging inclusive communities, and I think you guys have the presentation that was given. I also forwarded that to some of the, to our city manager and some of the folks on staff. One of the things that really stuck out to me was, you know, we have some great efforts underway here at the city with our healthy communities that Chief Bennett started, and that some of our staff assist with. But one of the things that Renton does that I really, really liked was that they used, they were able to create a group of people that was a very diverse group of people that really represented all of the residents of the city, and they used them as policy sounding boards to make sure that the council was getting, well, in this case, the mayor, but for us, it would be the council, was getting feedback from a more diverse and complete cross-section of the community. So I just want to throw out that as an idea of, is that something that we could try to do to get, to get that kind of input? I think our staff is doing a much better job of being able to get that outreach in the meetings that we have, and using some of the virtual town halls and things like that. But it just seemed like that was a really great way to get some additional voices heard, because people are busy, and we don't always, I think, get that. So that was just one of the things. There were some other really great ideas, some interesting statistics that were shared, and I encourage everyone to read through. I won't bore you with reading my report, but it was, it was really, it was really heartening to hear how they got more people involved. It was really heartening to hear, because we do have an ever-increasing diversification in our population, not just here in Sumamish, but across the region. There have been steps that were taken to make sure that we got diversity of people on staff to more accurately reflect the community as well. And there were some ideas in there about doing some initial blind reviews of applications so that people's names aren't on there. And just by removing people's names, you increase the diversity of the pool of people that get invited in for interviews, things like that. So there are a number of great recommendations in there. The, I think that's kind of it. The one thing I wanted to ask about, because I did attend the EFOR board meeting back in July, and I hadn't submitted a report since then, was, do we have something scheduled to have EFOR come back and talk about the different options? As, I know that there's, you do? Okay, great. Then I'll wait to hear, hear from that as well. The other thing that I don't have in here, but that, actually, I think I do, the first item I have is, is that Kirkland has submitted a request, or is in the process of submitting a request, to the Growth Management Planning Board, and has to go through the Growth Managing, Growth Man, the GMPC, we'll just say that, for two regional growth centers. And I know that their mayor submitted a letter to us describing what those are. We will need to take a vote at the next GMPC meeting, which will occur before our next council meeting. So I was hoping that we could get, I could get some direction from the council as to whether or not we wanted to be in support of... whether or not we wanted to be in support of that or not at the next GMPC meeting. So to give a little more background about what that is, is the GMPC will take those requests, they will make a recommendation to the GMPB. Being a regional growth center, there are obviously requirements for that around transit and densities, but what that will mean is that will mean that Kirkland will be setting up to be able to take more growth. So as, when the growth numbers, the next round of growth numbers come out, there will be two additional regional growth centers that, as we discussed before, and I think Councilmember Ross, you were the one that had, read out the table, that they would be areas that would take a much larger portion of that growth. So that's kind of just a high level. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that? If anybody, I hope everyone had a chance to read the letter from the mayor. Oh, and I think the city manager's got more info.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, Council. So when you're talking about this, Kirk Triplet sent me an email today, and this is the first I've heard of a letter or supporting this type of thing. I don't know, maybe we need to get more information first? I mean, is this something we need to rush into supporting? Is there a timeframe on it? Because I don't have all the information on it. Would you like maybe, or the council consensus-wise, would you like to maybe get staff to work with Kirkland? And, I mean, I just got the letter, I didn't get a chance to really read the letter, but to talk about what needs to be done, timeframe type of stuff, I mean, are you looking for a consensus?
There's a meeting next week, so, and there will be, probably be a request to take a vote on it next week, just because there's a, there's a whole timeline that they're trying to hit by the end of the year to get this through because of other plans and comp planning and to be prepared to be included in the 2040 planning and for the numbers that will come out.
Okay.
So there is, there is a bit of a timeline. They did present to the GMPC at the last meeting, I mentioned it back then as well in my report. They did just send the letter, I think late last week, to the council with some more information. So everyone on the council, I, I didn't realize you were left off that, I apologize.
No, I didn't get it, but, yeah.
But the rest of the council should have that, that letter in their inbox that gives a little more description.
I apologize, but I did not hear urgency when I talked to Kurt today.
Okay.
So with that being said, I don't know the whole story, I talked to him a little bit about it, he said that there was, there was the letter sent. I was planning on reading the letter and then talking to Kurt a little bit more, but, but I didn't hear any urgency that it needed to be done next week. So my question would be, do we really have to do it right now? Or can we wait, get some more information, bring this back to the council like a formal agenda item? I'm just thinking ahead for me, because I didn't really know anything about it.
I think in a perfect world, yes. I think timing-wise, we don't have another meeting before the next GMPC meeting.
Okay.
So we don't have to take a position, I mean, I, I don't have to vote on it either way at the GMPC.
Okay.
A decision will likely be made without our input if we don't have that. Now, there's a possibility that it could get pushed out to the, to the next GMPC meeting, but Christie, isn't it your understanding that, that this is going to come up at the next meeting? Or do you have details?
I have some, I have some other details, yes, because the, the email did not come, the letter from Kirkland came yesterday.
Okay, yesterday, sorry.
I, I ended up kind of scrambling and trying to figure out what was going on and why we were getting this letter. So I spoke to Jay Arnold from Kirkland this morning, and so it's, the GMPC voting members will vote as the caucus for SCA, not as individual cities.
Correct.
And that is the first step as GMPC, as they propose amendments, and that goes to the King County Council. The King County Council will then pass, the cities have to ratify that. Thirty percent of the cities must ratify it, but the thirty percent must represent seventy percent of the populations that come from King, from King County. And that is where we have our actual input as a jurisdiction. So taking a formal position now is not necessary for this.
Except that I often get to vote at the GMPC meeting as part of that caucus for that first step.
Understood. Let me finish real quick. We can give you feedback from Sumamish in a general sense, because we don't have all the pieces to the puzzle yet that I, you know, we can take kind of head nods from council that, you know, Sumamish is generally supportive of this, but I think we need more information, and because this all kind of hit yesterday, and based on my conversation with Jay, it was, he had had a conversation with you, and you thought maybe we wouldn't be favorable to this, and so I think, you know, I was trying to put the pieces of, okay, I'm just conveying information that, that I, that I got, so I'm just, I, I think we can take a general, like, poll of council members, that our formal position on this will come, assuming, and I'm assuming GMPC will give it something, and will go to the King County Council, and the King County Council will ask all the jurisdictions to ratify it, and that is when our council will need to take a formal position and vote on it.
Yeah, and, and I, I included this in my, my last report after the last GMPC meeting, letting everyone know that this was coming. My recommendation to Jay was that Kirkland send over the information so that the council would have all of the details, and that I, I felt like it was important for everyone to have all of the details to make a decision either way.
Sure.
I did not give an indication of where I thought the council would lean one way or the other. I mean, you know, I don't know if, if people have questions. They did do a presentation at the last GMPC meeting, so I can attempt to answer questions, but I certainly won't answer anything I don't know for sure.
Okay, Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, I have a question, is, is the council, it appears in the letter, but I couldn't tell for sure, is the council and Kirkland unanimous in this?
I don't know if they're unanimous, they're certainly, I, I think they are, and again, don't quote me on that, but there's, there is definitely support from Kirkland because they have been planning towards this for a very long time. They have the two transit centers in the city, they feel very confident and are excited about the transit that they will have, they have the, it's part of their comp planning, they have the, the plans to build up the, the mixed use and the, the higher-density housing around that to be, you know, the appropriate sort of job centers and things like that. So Kirkland is certainly very supportive of this, and they really definitely want to move it forward. You know, as I look at it objectively, there's, from our perspective, the pros and cons are, the pros are, there will be two additional regional growth centers which would take more of the growth. The more places in the region that are willing to take the growth, the less growth we will need to, to have to take. So the pro there is, great, there's going to be, there'll be two new regional growth centers that can absorb the growth, that will have the transit, that will take this on and hopefully create less damaging environmental effects and less traffic in the region. The con from our perspective would be, when there are more regional growth centers defined, they will get more of the resources. So those are the pros and cons that I can see from my perspective, but given the general feelings around growth, you know, from my perspective, it seems like there's an upside to that. I don't see there being a whole lot of pass-through traffic. I mean, I suppose if you live in Issaquah and you work in Kirkland, there may be pass-through traffic, but in terms of the other downsides, I don't see there being a lot of downsides to Sumamish on this.
Okay, any other comments? I know I worked in Kirkland for a long time, so they've been working on this a long time.
I'd like to remind the council that this is just a report, so if we continue the discussion, I would recommend that we put an agenda item, or at least get me a consensus if you want me to move forward with investigating, then I can get some more to the council and put this on as an item, so.
Yeah, I just, right now I think what we need are the head nods so that if I am a voting member of the GMPC next week, which I almost always am, I just need to know a general direction from our council.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm seeing three, four head nods.
I think it's fine to support it, just as a general overarching, and so we can get more details after it's normally ratified. I'm supportive of it.
Okay, I will, I will make sure that you guys get the additional details, because Kirkland did have a presentation last time, I thought I shared it, I'll go back into my report and see. If not, I will, I will make sure to get that to you guys.
So I got a pretty good full consensus to move forward with investigating, get the information, I'll bring in Mike Sugg, and we'll make that happen, we'll recall Kurt, and then I'll work with Counselor Stewart as well with your information, we'll get the information to the council, and then we'll, we'll get it on the agenda as well.
Excellent, thank you.
One of the things we'll be so on this, just for council's edification, is that Kirkland's looking to work very quickly to do this prior to the end of the year, so we can anticipate, I don't know how much legwork honestly, Mr. City Manager, you need to do. I think some would be good, just so that we understand some of the pros and cons, and some of what Councilmember Stewart, exactly what I kind of had in the back of my mind of seeing pros and cons. But I think the, the timeline will play out fairly quickly here, because their intention is that it's done before the year's over.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Councilmember Valderrama, do you have a report?
I do, thank you very much. Eastside Fire and Rescue, I'll leave the fire stations to you. We both attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue board meeting. Two other issues that I will cover was, first of all, Chief Clark mentioned, and it's something that actually Larry Patterson had raised before, the growing concern on the east sides over wildfires taking place, and how to start to address both the concerns and preventions and response to it. So he's going to be coming to our city and the other cities to talk more specifically about that. That was something that our former interim city manager Larry Patterson had raised, and in particular, the urban forestry management, to take that into account as we're going forward, so that's point one. Point two of more significant, or I should say of longer-term significant here that everybody should be aware of, years ago when we re-entered the ILA, the Internal Agreement that we have with the other partners of Eastside Fire and Rescue, we had also agreed to look at the nonprofit organization as an umbrella, which would, as was envisioned at that time, taking the same agreement that we had and moving it directly under the nonprofit for the reasons of governance, which now had two sides. One, that the employer of record was not Eastside Fire and Rescue, but District 10, and they wanted to correct that, as well as now in the audits, we've started to get dinged because of the manner of the governance, and that needs to be corrected. They brought forth, their attorneys, and the recommendation of the board is start moving forward with that. The two previous issues that had been of concern, of taxes and pensions, seem both to now have been resolved. They're going to be fast-tracking just to focus on those two major issues. Ideally, within sixty days, this will be brought before the council, so that you all are aware of it. And be aware, at least the last iteration of this, when we had gotten the other partners to agree to our issues on the ILA, we had conceded that we would support the nonprofit as a city. And that was the earlier council, but nonetheless, that was the position of the city, and we will look at this here shortly. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, Citizens for Sumamish met yesterday, again, accompanied by Deputy Mayor Moran and Councilmember Ross. They looked at and discussed the 2050 plan from PSRC, and looking at the budget and budget shortfalls, and where are we, and how are we going to address it? I thought it was an informative and beneficial session. Thank you.
I have some questions about the EFER, if I may. So in terms of the governance model, I, I think there's a couple of things. So I understand that part of the, there are two key pieces, one is the employer record, and another one is that EFER cannot own equipment right now. And so those were, were the two issues. One of the things that I think would be helpful for this council to understand is, they sound like good issues to deal with, but, you know, so what? Like, so what is the downside of not, of District 10 being the employer of record? And Chief Clark touched on some of those, but I think it would be good to get more of that detail, right? In terms of what kinds of problems does it create by not having the, the governing body, if you will, being the employer of record? And also in terms of owning equipment, and how, how, if it becomes a different governance model, will cities still be able to own some of the equipment? What happens to the actual fire station? So I think there are a number of things that we probably need to get sort of detailed out in terms of, of what issues we're trying to solve, and what new issues may arise with this new model. Again, not to say that it's a good or a bad thing, just to get that down. And then the other thing that I think we need to keep in mind is, what I heard at the meeting, Deputy Mayor, that you and I attended, was that in these new governance models, it will change the way new partners, once we establish the new model, the people who are in the original agreement will have one agreement, and anybody that gets added on after that will have, will not actually be able to be incorporated, it would all be sort of contract-type work, and so.
Yeah.
So what, what would that look like? And again, what are the pros and cons of that? And then also, I guess, one of the things that I, you know, it took a long time to get this agreement to where it is. Are we starting from scratch? Are we, can we establish the new model and say, we want all the same terms that are just in the ILA, and that's just it? Or, or how does that look so that we understand how all of that will work?
In my report.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to hit that first in my report, and then I'll go backwards. So basically, to answer on the governance part, the governance part that we spoke about this, at the meeting this week, was that basically what we're taking out of the ILA is going to go, and I've, and we've asked them that they, they take exactly what we have and change nothing. It's going to be exactly what we have, and it's going to go into this new form. We get nothing new, we get nothing changed, we get nothing less. And that's where we're starting. Anybody new coming in, that, we're not even touching that right now. And this process could take, and he said, six months, it could take a year. But right now, we're starting with, we're still going to own our stations, we're still going to own our own equipment, we're still going to, the, none of that is going to change. How many votes we have, none of that changes. How we, taxation stuff, none, nothing changes. It's all the same. The, the only thing that changes is that, you know, they can now buy equipment a different way, and, and the things that they were having problems with. So they're going to be putting together some visuals, because I said, you know, I want to see on paper, you know, apples and oranges. And so they will be putting that out so that everybody can see, you know, this is the good, this is what we have, this is what we have, this is, so you will be able to see. And that's what the attorneys were sent off to work on.
Okay.
So we will have that.
Great.
And we will, that, that is what they'll be bringing back to us.
Yeah, I think a clarity of what the, what problems the current agreement.
Right.
Creates, because I kind of get conceptually, but I think it would be good to understand that, because my fear, and I'm glad to hear that we'll be starting from what we have today, but as I understand it, it would still then have to go back to every city to be ratified, and that means that all forms of negotiation can come back onto the table. So I just want us to make sure that we're walking in this with our eyes wide open. Again, not to say that I'm not supportive of solving these problems, but.
Right.
We're going to have to go down this path, and some city could come back and say, I want, I want grapes instead of apples and oranges.
Provided there's no changes, everybody who's sitting at that table is okay, provided nobody's asking for anything new.
Hello, you guys, timeout, this is not discussion, this is reports.
Okay.
So I must remind the council, when you give a report, this is report, if we want to discuss something, I would be more than happy to put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
That is what's going to come back. Okay, so this is, I'm just reporting, we had lots, we had the meetings during the summer, we had them on July 7th, September 12th, and then back on the 8/28. The other things we discussed were the mutual aid and the PFAS. Then the things that were passed were the additional aid car that will be around the casino area, and we're going back to having the station on 212th will be back to being manned twenty-four hours a day until the station at Nissiquah is built. And it was, be by the end of the year, it was, we were hoping by the end of September, but it'd be between now and the end of the year, but it'll be very quickly, so I'm thrilled to death. And so those are the, that's the big stuff going on from the EF and R to report on. The other thing I did during the summertime was the, was the alt for SCA for the King County Flood Control District. So I was at those meetings. The big thing was the budget, because it was the value on the budget, so going through, I will send that out in my longer version, that's going to come out for our next meeting, so you can go see what the changes were to the budget, they were small ones for, for different cities. The one thing I want everybody to look at a little bit is, is the changes that were made in the budget, were changes from cities, because I would look at the, the changes that were made, they were, because I, I think our Inglewood, when we talk about the Inglewood water issues, and I think that that would fit into their scope of work really well. So when we start talking about where are we going to get the money for that area, I really think that, that is something that we, I'd like to see the, the city check into, because we've now, we're funding it for two different cities. So I do think it would fit in there very well. Anyway, so I will send that whole budget and what we worked on over summertime out in my larger report.
On the 13th, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership, and they had two very good presentations. One was led by the Port of Seattle. One was led by the Port of Seattle, and one by the Washington Department of Transportation. Both were infrastructure-related. What I found most interesting about the Port of Seattle is that others, roughly $700 million of improvements, they're talking about almost half of that going to the marine cargo infrastructure, and that marine cargo infrastructure drives about $12.4 billion of economic impact. The other thing that surprised me, which showed the most growth over time, is the Cruise, Cruise Seattle. It's almost $1 billion of economic impact, and so that's a big growth engine for the port. The other presentation from WashDOT was the I-5 System Partnership, and they described it as a spine of local and regional transportation systems. And there's actually an I-5 System Partnership group, and what I found surprising is that Bellevue's the only east side city participant on that. And I also attended yesterday the Citizens for Sammamish, good discussion on Vision 2050, and started some of the financial discussions. That's going to be a very good topic, and I think we're doing a study session on that sometime to start framing how we're approaching it. And that was kind of the crux of some of our discussions, how we frame and how we do the budget.
Councilmember Ritchie?
No report, thank you.
Okay, so Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, please. I do. I'm not going to read the written report, but I do want to highlight for council that there is feedback that I will need from you, and if you do not provide it in a written form prior to our next meeting, I will ask for it at that meeting. So if you do not read my report, please look at it, and the information that I need back from you is relative to the proposed King County Regional Homeless Authority. Seattle's mayor and the executive booth came forward and talked about this in public. It has had some interesting press. The long and short of PIC members is shown in the packet, but I think one of the overarching concerns that I will highlight is that, right now, the way it is structured, the governing, the governing board that sets policy doesn't have policymakers on it, and that was seen as problematic. There's a laundry list of other concerns that jurisdictions have. The needs from you are highlighted in yellow and are mostly questions, so please be prepared. You can email me that feedback, or we can, I can ask for it at our next council meeting, so that I can take it back in October.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Yes, I have no report, but I have a question about Councilmember Stewart's report under the PIC meeting, if I may. There was, Councilmember Stewart, you mentioned about, there was a move and seconded that Sammamish worried about unfunded mandate. This was not a agreed-upon piece of feedback. It was not clear that this was in reference to. Can you explain that comment in your report a little bit?
Sure. When we had our discussion about the guiding principles and the letter, we got an, we had a consensus, and we got an email from Mike Sugg about our agreed-upon feedback for the letter. I didn't see anything in there, and I don't recall us having any consensus on providing feedback on the guiding principles. So it was just a surprise to me that we provided that feedback on the guiding principles. I mean, I know you mentioned it as a comment, but I didn't, we didn't take any consensus as a council on it.
Well, I'm kind of scratching my head, because I thought that's what we were all talking about last Tuesday night, was input to the guiding principles, and we agreed on it, so I'm kind of...
No, that was for the letter. That was for the GMPC letter, and that was provided, and that will be provided in writing to PSRC.
But I thought Mike prepared the statement for Christie to take. Am I just misunderstanding, or what was everybody else's understanding?
So there were, let me, I want to clarify, because there's two separate things there, and we discussed them in tandem at PIC, so Councilmember Stewart may have misunderstood me when I gave my feedback, because they were looking for feedback, both for the guiding principles, as well as the GMPC letter. I noted the note in the council report as well, and so I went back and re-watched the council meeting, and I was like, did I hear that wrong? And I will read a quote from what I said, because I restated it back to confirm that I heard council right, and I said, what I'm hearing is that by and large, unlike the letter itself, I did hear a call for something, something relative to an unfunded mandate element be added into number five. Council, did I capture that correctly? While I mentioned the unfunded, or unfunded mandate, excuse me, specifically, then we followed up with Mike's addition for clarification, and he provided that language, which I read verbatim at the meeting. So the unfunded mandate case that I mentioned there, Councilmember Stewart, was relative to the feedback our council had provided, and because we were lumping both the letter and the guiding principles together in our feedback when we were talking at PIC, that's probably why you heard it, and that's where it came from.
And that was my recollection as well, so I'm kind of, I guess I'm wondering, and I'm a little bit concerned about having information in a council report that's inconsistent with what I thought was done at PIC.
So what we agreed to, and what we...
Can I finish, please? Can I, can I finish? Am I okay to finish?
Go ahead, Counselor.
All right. So what I would like to maybe ask, that if Councilmember Stewart is willing, that she could revise this report to conform with what I thought we had agreed. If not, we can take some formal action tonight to make clear, but if she's willing to revise her report, we wouldn't have to do that. So I'm putting a question out there, if she's willing to revise this and resubmit it for the record.
I would be happy to go back and re-watch our council meeting, but my recollection of the council meeting and what we agreed to in email afterwards was a, at which Mayor Malchow did read verbatim on the GMPC letter, but we did not agree to any specific feedback to the guiding principles. We only agreed to feedback on the GMPC letter.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion, that I will move that we clarify and ratify that the input we had from last week, and that was read into the record by Mayor Malchow, was relating to both the guiding principle and the letter for GMPC.
Do we need a motion? She already said she would look.
I'll go look at the tape.
No, she's not agreeing. I want to fix it now, we have eight minutes, because they're inconsistent.
Okay, we need to clarify and ratify.
Can I just go watch the tape, and then I'll update my report accordingly, after I get to re-watch the council meeting?
No, let's take formal action.
There's a, there's a motion on the table. We're just, we have to wait for a second before we should discuss it, because Counselor Hornish made a formal motion, so is there a second?
Fine, I'll second it, so we can have our discussion.
Okay, now there's a motion and a second, now we can go ahead and discuss it. Which we shouldn't be discussing in reports anyways, but
That's true.
Since there's a motion, we're just going to discuss it, so.
Okay. Oh, now there's not going to be any. All right. So now we're back to, you're going to go and...
You got lights on, though.
Okay, so now we have lights on. So Councilmember Valderrama, followed by Councilmember Ritchie.
I don't understand why I'm doing a motion. She already agreed to take a look at it and go back. I find this to be meaningless, it's a waste of time.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
May I ask for someone to restate the motion, please?
I'll be happy to. To clarify and ratify that the action taken was, and put forth by Mike Sugg and read by Mayor Malchow at the PIC meeting, applied to both the guiding principles and the GMPC letter.
And that's been seconded, and I appreciate that. And the question is that, and Councilmember Stewart, please help me understand, I'm having that vote now versus looking at the tape is problematic. Why?
Well, because nowhere in any of our wording did we use the term unfunded mandate. We had a written statement that we all agreed to, which said, whatever, so I just, it was just different feedback than what the council had agreed to, shared at the PIC meeting. So I will go back and happily watch the tape of our meeting, but...
It's 36 seconds.
I guess, I just want to clarify, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What, when's the, when is it on the tape, Mayor Malchow?
Thirty-six minutes and 45 seconds into the meeting is when I restated the feedback that I heard, including the unfunded mandate piece, and I asked for your specifically counsel, did I capture that correctly? No one's...
So I just want to make sure I understand, because we do have a motion, I want to, I would like to vote accurately here. Not trying to be difficult, I just want to understand. Is the question whether or not we are including the term unfunded mandate in both documents? Or was your understanding, Councilmember Stewart, that we included in one and not the other?
My understanding from our meeting was that we had agreed-upon feedback for the GMPC letter. If it applied to both, that would be fine, but that was not what was stated at PIC. There were two different sets of feedback provided at PIC, so...
Can I ask when this meeting is, that you need to...
It already happened.
Okay, so...
It's a, I gave a report on something that happened in the past already, so I'm not really sure why we're taking, I'm not even sure that, can anyone compel me to change my report? I don't know that that's...
That's why we're taking a motion, to clarify and ratify.
So, okay, but if the, if the action already happened,
Right.
then the action, then the motion, Tom, if Councilmember Hornish would be to ask Councilmember Stewart, who is our member of that...
No, I was just there.
You were just there?
Yeah.
And you presented a letter?
I didn't present anything.
Okay, so
No.
we were asking you to correct the, your statement in your, in your minute, in your Councilmember report.
He was just asking her to clarify in her record, or report.
So, so we're asking, so this, so this has already happened. This has already happened, this is not a publicly facing thing, this is, we're asking Councilmember Stewart, in her Councilmember report, to, to correct or change something that she has in her report about something that's already happened, that management analyst, staff, Mike Sugg presented. Is that, is that what's going, I mean, this isn't something we're presenting to another body, right?
No, 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 I asked for that, got shot down. The motion now is to take a formal action, that we are clarifying and ratifying, that what was done was what we all agreed to as a council. We're ratifying it post.
Okay.
Mayor, nice, nice. But just put it to...
I just want to make sure, again, I appreciate that, Councilmember Hornish, but the action has already happened, is so it's, it's already out the door, and we did.
No.
We already have done this, so...
It's to clarify that there was no misunderstanding, except for this Councilmember Stewart.
And just to clarify, I didn't shoot anything down. I agreed that I would go back and look.
Right.
And I think that is 100% different than shooting anything down.
So I guess I, I just...
I didn't ask you to go back and look, I asked you to change it.
Am I in the queue? Okay, so Councilmember Ritchie has the floor.
Thanks. I guess I'm, this is the part in this council where I start thinking that because this has already happened, and because there was an agreement that was already presented, and it is after the fact, I guess this is where I feel like we've become kind of argumentative, and it, there is no, I guess I just question the value of continuing to talk about this, never mind vote on this, or the value of the motion. I think, people can disagree or differ on what was said, and they can take actions in future Councilmember reports to correct it if they'd like to, or they can leave it out there if it's not, it's, we have the tape, we have the time. Thank you to the mayor for watching it again, and I, I guess I'm, I, you know, it's 20 to nine, and we're talking about something that doesn't really have a lot of, I'm questioning the value of what we're doing right now. And I'm not trying to say that there isn't, there isn't a right or wrong answer, I'm saying that what is the value of what we're doing right now? That's, that's my question, and I don't know, and I'm, if there was some value to it, I think we should continue to do this and figure it out, but it's like, you know, toothpaste is out of the tube, guys, you know? It's done, and it's been presented, so I'm, I'd just rather not continue to be argumentative with each other about something that's already happened and try to move on. So, thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
Aaron, I'd like to speak.
Okay. I'm, I'm going, I'm going to speak. I haven't spoke yet.
Yeah, but if a call to question supersedes it, doesn't it, if it's seconded?
We second and vote it. Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to speak, because it wasn't seconded.
Thank you.
First of all, Pam has already agreed that she is going to go back and do this.
Exactly.
And all we're asking is, is they're asking for her to go back and, and basically clarify, rectify, litify, and, you know, make sure that it's, the accuracy is there. That's all.
Yeah.
She's agreed to do it, and let's just take the vote and get this done, so we can get out of here.
But the vote is...
I'm in the queue.
Oh, that's my opinion, and now we will, and now the two that are in queue that are up in the clouds, we will call for Mayor Malchow first, Councilmember Hornish second, and provided there's no other lights, then we're going to have the vote.
Okay, thank you. I think it can provide a lot of clarity that may make this all a moot point, which is, what we stated to Mike Sugg, in a nutshell, was the unfunded mandate. And I read you my quote, because I went back to watch the video. What Mike put together was a longer iteration of those two words together, and I'm going to read to you. We said unfunded mandate in council chambers. I asked for your clarification on that, no one said anything, they, they agreed. What Mike put was, "Local funding will not be sufficient to provide the infrastructure and improved transit service necessary," da-da-da-da. That is the unfunded mandate. Mike just didn't use that term, so we're, we're kind of mincing words here. When I use the term unfunded mandate, that is, because that is the term that we, as councilmembers, agreed to, and I asked for your input on. That's what I said, and then I turned around and I read Mike's quote. So I think we're splitting hairs here on terminology, but unfunded mandate was absolutely discussed in our council meeting, it's just that Mike wordsmithed it much nicer.
Okay, Councilmember Hornish?
I concur that we are splitting words and mincing words here, but I want to make it clear in the record for tonight, what was done last week and what we all agreed to. Very good.
Okay.
Call the question.
Okay, and so we are going to have a vote on this?
Thank God.
And so we can be done with this. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 What are we voting on? What are we voting on?
Motion and seconded. Councilornish?
The motion, please?
Councilornish, can you please repeat the motion again, please?
Sure. It is to clarify and ratify that the concept that was agreed, or head-nodded, or however you want to put it, at the last study session, applied to both the guiding principles and the letter for GMPC.
Was mandated.
Which was the unfunded mandate, so.
Okay, okay.
But it was, I'm sorry.
That, that's the motion and the second, so we already had an aye vote.
Yep.
We had, but, but you, but, so where are you, Councilor?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Cloud? So that's four, right? That's what I see?
Nay.
Ask for a vote.
Nay.
Nay.
I said I would... That's four nay? Okay, what is? Four ayes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Did you call him for the nays, or were you voting nay?
No, I called for the nays.
She said yea initially.
Okay, she said yea.
It's four three.
Okay, you said yea initially.
All right.
Passes four three?
Of course it passes four three.